Thank you, Mayor Mora. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
The time is 7:04, and the closed session is adjourned. The next meeting will start in 10 minutes. The time is 7:15. This is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we'll now move to public comment. This is public comment for items on the closed session items. Are there any members of the public who would like to make comment on the closed session items? Seeing none, we'll move to five, and we'll be taking item 5.1 in closed session. The time is 7:02. The time is 7:04. We've returned from closed session. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any items to report?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
The time is 7:04, and the closed session is adjourned. The next meeting will start in 10 minutes. The time is 7:15. This is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. I'll now entertain a approval of the final agenda. Members, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye. Now is the time for ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we'll now move to public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Are there members of the public who would like to make public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? And just a reminder, this is, this meeting is, precedes the regular city council meeting. You can come to the podium. You'll have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Ellie Friedman. I'm a registered nurse and work in the MedSurg Department, Medical Surgical Department at Alta Bates Summit Medical Center in Berkeley. I'm also a union member of the California Nurses Association, and I'm here to speak about Sutter Health's recently announced plans for a one billion complex in Emeryville. Sutter needs to be transparent and engage all impacted stakeholders, such as patients, their employees, and the greater community that will be affected. Sutter has not been transparent with us and has provided us very little information. In February, Sutter held two short discussions for staff about the expansion. Each were 30 minutes long and a brief five-minute Q and A session, hardly enough time for nurses and other employees to get into the practical details about how the expansion impacts healthcare services. Nurses, community members, and elected officials have been in a multi-year fight to stop Sutter from closing down Alta Bates and to keep acute healthcare services in Berkeley. What will happen to the Ashby campus? Sutter has not provided information about this. Sutter has an obligation to retrofit the Alta Bates Ashby Campus Hospital in Berkeley, which they have been delaying for years. Could Sutter be attempting to avoid their obligations to retrofit with these new plans? Emeryville residents need services too. We want to raise awareness that Sutter has shown itself not to be a good community partner time and time again in Berkeley and throughout the East Bay. Local electives such as yourselves and your constituents deserve to have real community input and deserve more than superficial statements and platitudes from Sutter, which have become all too familiar with us. The East Bay continues to face and struggle with enough services and our healthcare desert, especially with the closures of Doctors Medical Center, so it is critical that we all work together. Nurses will be using the power of our union to demand transparency.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Welcome. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rita Flores. I am a surgical technician at Mission Bernal Campus in San Francisco. I'm also an SEIU UHW union member. I am here tonight to express concern because in my experience, Sutter Health has lost sight of its values. At my campus, Mission Bernal, Sutter Health closed down our labor and delivery department permanently, not living up to the agreements with the City of San Francisco, affecting the whole community, patients, labor and delivery technicians, and nurses. Sutter causing so much uncertainty and not living up to their values of serving working people in the Mission District. In recent years, Sutter executives have engaged in a pattern of closing down services in poorer communities of color and focusing their resources on wealthier areas, betraying their nonprofit values. Bottom line, the community needs Sutter Health to return to its core values of providing great patient care for Northern California's most vulnerable communities. The people that voted for you are depending on you to hold Sutter to these standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Doug Jones. I'm a political organizer for SEIU United Healthcare Workers, statewide union of over 110,000 workers, and I used to work at a Sutter hospital. I worked at Sutter Eden Medical Center for 25 years. And one of the things that happened in the rebuild that Sutter Health made of the Castor Valley Hospital is that they made that hospital 50 beds smaller. And one of the units that was eliminated in the rebuild was a 20-bed inpatient psych unit. I think we can all see, and you as city council members are made accountable to the untreated mental illness which is in the East Bay and throughout our neighborhoods. One of the things that is creating that accountability that you're facing more and more often is the fact that private sector providers like Sutter Health are abandoning behavioral health, abandoning labor and delivery and other services that are very important safety net services for the community. So as Sutter Health starts moving this project through, it's going to be really important to remember that we just went through a pandemic where we literally did not have enough beds for the community. And we're during the period of time in which this hospital is functional, it's very likely that we're going to have our next big earthquake. It's going to be necessary that this hospital be able to take an unusual amount of patients for when patients get sick or we have that disaster. So it's important that at minimum that the hospital that's built in Emeryville be at least the same size as the current hospital in Berkeley, and that it has a broad set of safety net services, not just the lucrative services that Sutter typically wants to operate. So thank you for considering this, and we look forward to continuing to engage with you on this.
Thank you. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Chang. I'm a labor representative for the California Nurses Association. I represent the nurses and also the tech workers at ABSMC. So I'm here to really follow up on what my colleagues have already spoken to, but really to emphasize a couple additional things. As the last speaker just mentioned, we are very concerned about the availability and the community's access to OB and labor and delivery services. We're in the process, you know, advocates and healthcare workers across the state are in the process of trying to pass legislation that would say that OB and labor and delivery services are required, right, for all hospitals, because we're seeing too many cases where hospitals are closing down these needed services, and this impacts, not surprisingly, low-income, working-class communities of color, as we just saw at St. Rose Hospital in Hayward, where, you know, now that community does not have access to those services, right? And I'm the labor representative over there and supported those workers to fight back against that process. So we really want to make sure that nothing happens there. To close out, we are asking the city council to help facilitate a fair, transparent process with all stakeholders. We hope that you will help hold Sutter accountable to protecting our patients, communities, including the dedicated nurses and healthcare workers that you're going to hear from today and for a long time moving forward, right? And this includes at minimum, one, providing at least the same quality and access of care for all East Bay communities as right now, as, you know, as opposed to at the end of whatever project is going to happen. Two, committing that no healthcare workers will be displaced and all these good union jobs stay in the East Bay. That's very important, obviously, for Emeryville residents and for the whole East Bay. Third, you know, there's too many examples where employers have done this, moved the hospital five miles down the road just to try to eliminate the union. So that must not happen. Thank you.
Welcome. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kiana Smith. I'm going to change the tone a little bit. I'm the assistant to the CEO of Spoiled Boutique, and we would just like everyone to join us on June 14th for the Bay Area Black Fashion Expo at Bay Street Shopping Center in Emeryville. In celebration of Juneteenth, this incredible event highlights and honors the Bay Area's tremendous talent in the fashion industry and in the beauty industry. It is featuring over 100 black-owned vendors that will be there from 12 to 7. We'll have a fashion show at 2:00 PM. We'll have a full day of live music, live performances, best dress contests, raffle giveaways, and so much more. So we would like, you know, to invite everyone in the community and all of you to come and enjoy the event on June 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, next we move to the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have one action item, and I'd like to note that this action item is, it represents the same budget information that we saw last meeting. So I'd like to see if the council is amenable to waiving presentation. The presentation is waived. Members, are there any questions on this item? Seeing no questions, we'll now take public comment on this item. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville to appropriate $39 million into the successor agency's fiscal year budget? Seeing no members of the public, I'll bring this back to council. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Mora, are we on the successor agency regular meeting?
Yes, action item 7.1.
All right. My apologies. I cannot make that motion because it's not on my, on the... Unless there's some technical issue, I'm not seeing it on my... Yeah, it's not, this is it for today, right? I'll defer to my colleagues to make the motion.
I move approval of item 7.1.
One second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
I'll have to abstain because I don't have that item.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The time is 7:27. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:27. This is the regular meeting for the city council of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that all members are still seated. Next, we have approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have special orders of the day. First, we have a proclamation of the city council of the City of Emeryville recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQI-plus Pride Month in the City of Emeryville. Whereas, in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28th, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots, where LGBTQI-plus protesters stood up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discrimination. And in the decades since, civil rights for LGBTQI-plus people have grown substantially, and pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the Stonewall Riots. And even with all the progress that has been made, the rights of members of the community are still under attack as they continue to face discrimination and persistent efforts to undermine their human rights. During Pride Month, the Emeryville City Council reflects on the progress that has been made toward inclusion and equality for the LGBTQI-plus community, celebrating the people who are living their lives openly and with pride more than ever before, as we also reaffirm the ongoing need for commitment to fostering justice and preventing discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. From business leaders and professors to athletes and entertainers in all walks of life, these individuals have achieved success and prominence in our society, and we honor their fortitude and those who have fought so that others can live authentically. And our city and the entire nation draw strength from the diversity of all kinds, with each individual contributing to the greater whole. And by affirming these rights and values, we all benefit. And the purpose of proclaiming Pride Month is to recognize and educate the community on the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex individuals have had historically, locally, nationally, and internationally. Now, therefore it be resolved by the city council of the City of Emeryville that the month of June is hereby proclaimed as Lesbian, Gay, Bigender, Transgender, Queer, Intersex Plus Pride Month in the City of Emeryville, and the pride flag will be flown in front of City Hall for the entire month, as proclaimed by the mayor of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Next, we have recognition of outstanding achievements for Emory High School students Jordan King Henry and Eliana Thornton. So the City of Emeryville recognizes Jordan King Henry and Eliana Thornton for their outstanding achievements as the top debaters in the Bay Area Urban Debate League Championship. These two seniors helped win the title for Emory High School. Additionally, Jordan won the league's top scholarship and is a star track athlete and scholar. The City of Emeryville is pleased to honor these two graduates for their outstanding achievements and wishes them well in their future endeavors. And I'd like to invite the principal, Kibbe Kleiman, and the two students, if they'd like to make a few words to the podium.
My words will be quick, which is just to recognize these two for their outstanding accomplishment. The activity of debate is one that brings out the very best, and we have the best in the region. It's Ellie and Jordan, and this day and this year belongs to them.
Good evening, city council. I just want to say that I'm really grateful for being recognized, and I'm just honored to see that what I've done is being seen and how I'm, you know, being the leader and just all my hard work is not going, like, unheard of and blind. And it just makes me really happy to feel like I'm seen, especially as a young black man. And I'm just overall really grateful for you guys recognizing me. Thank you.
Congratulations.
My name's Ellie, and I'm very appreciative of this award. I started at Emory and ECDC, and I'm now graduating Emory High School. And I'm super prideful in my place at Emory. I'm grateful for the support and the opportunities that the City of Emeryville has given me. The person I am, my ability to debate, is because of the City of Emeryville. So I am very honored for receiving this award, and I just want to say thank you so much for everything that Emeryville has given me in creating the person I am today. So, yeah.
And we have a certificate and a small token of recognition for you. And I'd like to also invite the rest of the city council, if they'd like to take a picture. We can all head down there.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report tonight. The city council will be making appointments at the next, at the June 17th council meeting. Thank you.
Next, we have council members' special announcements or reports on meeting attendance. Members, is there anything you'd like to report? Seeing none, we will move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and congratulations to both Jordan and Eliana again. I just have two things that I would like to share this evening. One is, the City of Emeryville is in the June edition of the Western City Magazine that highlights the City of Emeryville and the City of Davis. The article is titled, "These Two Cities Became 'Biking Oasis: Could Yours Be Next?" So thank you so much to Mohammed, our Public Works Director, and others that contributed to that article. It would be a good read. And then, secondly, and probably most importantly, I would like to introduce and welcome to her first city council meeting, our new finance director, Ms. Sharon Friedrichson, who is, if you could stand. We are so excited to have her, and I would like to thank Brian Mora, who will stay on with us to support the transition, and a special thanks to Lily Bell Nakamura, who wore two hats as the HR Director and the Acting Finance Director. And Lily Bell did an amazing job leading the team through the budget, which we'll be adopting this evening, and we are grateful for her commitment to the City of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you, Latonya, and welcome, Sharon. Next, we have ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move to public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Welcome. You have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Sarah Chestnut-Fry. I'm a tenant at 1440 62nd Street, owned by Wareham Development and 6221 Hollis Street. The building I live in is an old cable-turning factory, originally built in 1920. Since the '70s, it has been a live-work space, home to a thriving artist community of small businesses and creative professionals. I've lived there for almost eight years, and my apartment has been one of the deciding factors in why I've stayed in the Bay Area. It's been a source of inspiration, community, and stability. In 2021, Wareham publicly announced plans to demolish and redevelop the property. Since then, the building has steadily emptied out, leases haven't been renewed, and tenants have moved out without replacement. Those of us who have remained have dealt with constant utility shut-offs, a mandatory week-long hotel stay, and relentless construction noise, all while trying to live and work in our homes. Today, only 14 of the 42 residential units are still occupied. In January of this year, major demolition work began, and for months, tenants were exposed to heavy dust without basic protections. There were no barriers between active construction zones and common areas we still have to use every day. Much of the work appeared to be done without permits or full city oversight. As a result, my unit and others have tested positive for hazardous levels of lead-dust contamination. Everything we own now must be professionally cleaned. Many tenants have experienced health issues and suspect that construction may be causing or contributing to them. I've been displaced from my home for over a month, with no formal acknowledgement that my unit is uninhabitable, no clear legal location support, limited access to my belongings due to contamination concerns, and no timeline for return. Throughout this process, I've had to advocate persistently for clear test results, documentation, and confirmation of proper work certifications. While Wareham states that it is following procedures, our lived experience raises significant concerns.
Thank you for your comment. And I trust city staff will follow up with you. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we next have the consent agenda. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearings. Item 11.1, an introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Emeryville amending Chapter 6 of Title 3 and Chapter 9 of Chapter 7 of the Emeryville Municipal Code to make updates for consistency with state law.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. John Kennedy, City Attorney. My presentation will be brief. Next slide, please. In 2003, the city elected to become subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, otherwise referred to as the Act. The Act includes procedures for the procurement of public projects. Staff have identified amendments to Chapter 6, which is the purchasing system of Title 3 and Chapter 9, informal bidding procedures of Title 7, to make the Emeryville Municipal Code consistent with the Act and the city's Administrative Instruction 605, which has to do with purchasing and accounts payable procedures. Next slide, please. The Chapter 6 amendments we are proposing today would exclude public projects from the purchasing procedures, since public projects are subject to separate procurement procedures under the Act. It would update the statutory reference for the definition of public project to reflect the applicable statute under the Act, and would clarify that the purchasing procedures apply to purchases exceeding $5,000, consistent with Administrative Instruction 605. Next slide, please. The Chapter 9 amendments we are proposing would make changes to the Emeryville Municipal Code for consistency with the informal bidding requirements under the Act. It would include an update to the definition for public project. It would expand the options for distributing the notice inviting informal bids to include fax or email, consistent with the Act. It would clarify that the city may provide notice inviting informal bids to contractors on the city's contractors list or to trade journals, and would make other minor edits for consistency with the Act. Next slide, please. At this point, we recommend that the city council waive the first reading and introduce by title only the ordinance that we have presented for you today. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Members, do we have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing. The time is 7:43. Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item, you can come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes. Seeing no members of the public for this item, the time is 7:44. The public hearing is now closed. I'll bring this back to council for discussion or a motion, and the staff recommendation was to waive first reading and read by title only.
Motion to waive first reading and read by title only.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Kennedy, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Emeryville amending Chapter 6, perenn purchasing system, and perenn of Title 3, perenn finance, and perenn in Chapter 9, informal bidding procedures, and perenn of Title 7, perenn public works, and perenn of the Emeryville Municipal Code to make updates for consistency with state law, sequo determination not a project, and exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15378, subsection B, subsection 5, and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the first reading? We have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the first reading?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have action item 12.1, "Amended Proposed 2025/2026 State and Federal Legislative Agenda and Recommended State Legislative Positions."
Welcome. Thank you very much, honorable mayor and council members. Nicolo De Luca, the sequel to the last council meeting. As a follow-up, as a reminder, we talked about the ledge platform, and you all were extremely helpful on what your goals were and the bills that you cared about. So, part of the agenda packet was an updated ledge platform, clean version, track-changes version, and then from there, where you all stood on a handful of bills. As a point in time, right now, like literally right now, both chambers are in session. This is what we call the final week of House of Origin deadline, so they're debating a lot of bills. So, the time to weigh in is very helpful. We did a memo on kind of some recommended positions, based on a lot of your feedback, and kind of going from left to right, feedback on legislation for tenants, legislation related to transportation, legislation that moves the needle, legislation on utilities and the environment, and then legislation on guaranteed income. So, I took all that feedback, and really, the, kind of my north star was bills that's worthwhile for the city to weigh in on, and bills that really move the needle, effective bills. No disrespect to any of the other bills, but I figured it'd be good to kind of do this in clumps. So, the memo also then has a summary and then a link to provide more information. I recall, some of the council members talked about who supports, who opposes, who's the sponsor. So, I wanted to do it in very digestible, bite-sized pieces. So, with that said, if it's helpful, I can kind of go through the slides on all the positions that I'm proposing. And as a former city manager that I worked for, always said, "Staff proposes, and the city council disposes." So, these are just my recommendations, and trying to meet all of your needs. So, honorable mayor, if you're cool with that, I can just kind of rip through these slides.
Sounds good.
Perfect. All right. Next slide, please. So, just kind of, we're going to do a quick overview of recommended priority legislation, and of course, answer any questions. Next slide, please. And then, just as a friendly reminder, our state strategy is really tailored engagement, which we're talking about now, coordinating with you all and the city team on specific pieces of legislation, weekly updates as to where these bills are, and just really being effective and focused on what bills we're working on. Next slide, please. So, with that said, every bill that's on this list, there's a recommended position of either support, support with amendments, oppose, or oppose unless amended. And then, if it's in italics, it's usually on the opposed side. So, the first bill, AB 69, is a simple bill about insurance policy renewals, and it requires a broker of record to determine if a fair access to insurance requirements, fair plan, if that policy can be moved to the voluntary market before the fair plan policy is renewed. This is a strong piece of legislation. It's really protecting homeowners and others as it relates to the cancellation of insurance policies. Recommended position, as you all know, is support. Second bill, AB 306, Assemblymember Schultz. This is getting a lot of discussion, and it's really about building regulations and the state, building standards, and proposing a moratorium on adoption of or modification of these new standards. We're recommending a position of support with amendments, and the reason we're saying support with amendments is because we want to work with the author's office to get some of our amendments in. And a lot of the amendments that we're looking at, other municipalities are proposing them. So, we figure that's a good lineup for the city. So, if it's maybe easier, we'll talk about the bill on each slide and then go to the next slide, or do you want me to just go through all of them?
I think the overview of each one-
Okay. Perfect.
-is good.
Next slide, please. These are two bills from Assemblymember Wicks. The goal is to really enhance the ability to build more housing. AB 609 is a bill that she's very passionate about, that gives a SEQA exemption for housing developments that are on sites up to 20 acres. They're near former urban uses, and it's an incorporated city or town with the population that you see. The reason why we're recommending support is because this would definitely help alleviate various barriers that are used to stop housing projects. The next bill, AB 736, from Assemblywoman Wicks, is her housing bond, which is pretty straightforward. It's $10 billion to replenish the state housing, pots of housing funding that would go for affordable housing. I spoke to Ms. Wicks today about this bill. She's really excited, and there could be an effort to fast-track that in the budget negotiations. Next slide, please. These next two bills are AB 1162, is Assemblywoman Bonta's bill. It's something that she's doing for the city of Alameda. I'm recommending support because, A, she's our hometown Assemblywoman; B, this would help stop frivolous lawsuits against housing projects; and B, I'm sorry, and C, I'm a little tired of C, helping support regional housing projects. I feel it's not only good for the city, but good for the region. The next bill, AB 1248, from Assemblymember Haney. This limits the fees that a landlord may charge in addition to rent, and requires that any housing services provided by the landlord must be included in the rent and not charged as a separate fee. That bill was under the recommendation of looking out for tenants and being supportive of tenant rights. Next slide, please. We've got two Scott Weiner bills here. SB 63, which is the San Francisco area local revenue measure. That passed off the Senate floor Monday, Tuesday? It's kind of in a blur. That's moving forward. He did say he'd take amendments to support small bus operators, but this is definitely moving with some good momentum. It's also a priority. Senator Aragorn, our senator, is a co-author. SB 79, from Senator Weiner, is literally being debated right now on the Senate floor. So, I'll keep the team posted as if it moves out. But this is one of his streamlining bills with, for projects within a quarter mile or half mile of transit stops. He has taken a handful of amendments to reduce the height requirements, to provide more oversight from transit agencies, encourage them to work more with municipalities on some of the design standards, and this also provides some SEQA exemptions. Both these bills are recommending support. Next slide, please. Following up, Senator Aragorn's SB 239 is a priority of his. That allows for greater teleconferencing for council meetings. This bill is moving forward. And then, SB 295, from Senator Hurtado. It's the bill establishes the California Preventing Algorithmic Collusion Act of 2025, which was something that was discussed when I was here, about ensuring rents are not overly priced, and also is a way to help protect tenants. Next slide, please. SB 417 is a Senate version of the housing bond. It's currently on hold, but I felt that it would be prudent for us to support the Assembly version of the housing bond and the Senate version of the housing bond, because we're being clear that we need funding to build housing. Senate Bill 456, from Senator Ashby. I frankly, when I read this bill, immediately, Emeryville came to mind. You all are the first city that had artists paint the utility boxes to make them attractive and not mean eyesore. This bill says that if you're an artist who's receiving support from a city to build a, paint a mural, or to paint public property, you don't need a contractor's license. It seems a little over the top, but there has been some challenges to some actions of locals when they hand out grants for murals. There is a debate of, you receive funding to do this work, that you would need a contractor's license, and since Emeryville has always been a city that supports the arts and artists, I feel strongly that this is a bill worth supporting. I did talk to the author's office to see if this is something they might think about, maybe expanding outside of muralists. The answer right now is no. They're focused on just muralists. Depending on if this bill moves forward and is signed into law, they might consider other efforts. And then, I think we're getting to the final slide. SB 692, from Senator Aragorn. It's a priority bill of his. It essentially gives cities authority on removal and disposal abilities when an abandoned, and it's clear, an abandoned RV is either an imminent health and/or safety hazard. As far as abandoned RVs, and I know the author's office has worked with the ACLU to address some of their concerns. That bill was just voted off the Senate floor today. It's a priority of the senator. And then, finally, the last bill, the recommended position is oppose unless amended. Senate Bill 707, from Senator Durazo. She's making a lot of changes to the Brown Act. Some are helpful. Some are a hindrance to local government. We've talked to her office a lot. We've got some suggested changes. She's taken a lot of good amendments. Hopefully, she'll take more. But right now, due to some of the impacts and requirements that they're putting on cities, our position, our recommended position is oppose unless amended. So, I think that should be it, and happy to answer any questions. And again, I like to give props to our team. You see me, but we've got a great team behind us, and that's just, they're lovely pictures. So, happy to answer any questions, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Nicolo. First of all, thank you for coming back so quickly and taking the guidance that we provided at the last council meeting, putting that together, and then applying that to what you're seeing in the Capitol, and giving us those recommended support, if amended, or oppose unless amended, recommendations. So, I'd like to bring it back to the council, just to ask clarifying questions before we take public comment. Any questions on the presentation from Nicolo? Okay, let's move to public comment. Thank you, Nicolo. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Hello, council. I'm Sam Gould, Planning Commissioner for the city of Emeryville. I am here, just so impressed with the set of legislation that Nicolo brought back to you, because I was planning on coming here and saying why you should support or oppose certain things, but this list is pretty perfect, honestly. I wanted to call out some bills in particular. Buffy Wicks, 609, the SEQA exemption passed through the Assembly floor on unanimous consent. It is very popular, and it will make an impact on projects that were stalled due to SEQA. SB 79, I'm listening to it right now. It's being debated on the Senate floor, so if I seem a little distracted, that's why. It is pairing housing development with transit. We have a transit funding crisis and a housing crisis. It is so important that we combine these and tackle them together, because we have unaffordable housing, and we have transit that can't keep themselves open without funding every single year. So, I support that bill as well. The only bill that wasn't present on this list that I wish was, was Aragorn's SB 9, clarifying some ADU regulation. ADUs have been some of the most popular type of housing developed in Emeryville. I believe most of our new housing stock that hasn't been apartments has been ADUs, and I would have loved to see that here, but honestly, no notes. I recommend that you support this list as presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Okay, let's bring it back to the council for discussion. And maybe just a clarifying question on, we heard a remark about SB 9. Did you want to speak to that, Nicolo?
I first wanted to thank for the ringing endorsement. We did not plan this, but that was awesome, so thank you. You know, my head's been such a blur this last week and this week. Off the top of my head, I can't recall where SB 9 is. However, I would love to get this trunch done, and then come back to you all with additional bills, and happy to include that as the next list.
Sounds good. Members, any other discussion on the proposed and the recommended positions? Member Solomon, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just say really quickly. Well, thank you, Nicolo, for the overview. Learned a lot about what's going on in the state, so it's very helpful. Just wanted to comment briefly on AB 306, which is the building standards, which you're recommending support if amended. Just want to note that I think that the bill is well-intentioned for reducing housing costs. I have some concerns about, you know, whether we are trading off short-term costs for long-term costs, both in terms of actual, you know, monetary costs for, in terms of efficiency, but also, you know, greenhouse gas and pollution impacts. So, look forward to working with your team and city staff on developing amendments that could match what the city wants and what's best for the region.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Members, any other comments? Member Pryforce.
Thank you for your presentation. Sorry, I missed most of it, but definitely did my homework. So, there are about, I'll say about six of these that I just want to stay on the record of not supporting. Of course, I'm just a minority on this council, but I just wanted to make it clear, my opposition to AB 609, which the supporters are the California Apartment Association and California YMB, and the opponents are Sierra Club, California, and environmental justice groups. I oppose AB 609 because it weakens SEQA by exempting certain housing projects from environmental review. This opens the door to irresponsible development, especially near freeways and toxic sites, putting public health at risk. Developers must not be given a blank check to bypass community and environmental protections. And then, there's AB 736, which I also oppose. The California Building Industry Association and California YMB, again, are supporters, and the opponents are Tenants Together and Housing Now Coalition. AB 736 disguises itself as an affordable housing solution, but it's a massive bond giveaway with little oversight or equity safeguards. It does not guarantee protections for low-income tenants or prevent displacement. It's backed by groups that have consistently undermined rent control and tenant rights. I also oppose AB 1162, which is supporter, California Apartment Association, and the opponents, environmental and tenant right groups. This bill tilts the legal playing field in favor of developers by labeling community lawsuits as "taxacious." Real community input and environmental concerns deserve a fair hearing, not to be silenced. We must stop scapegoating residents who speak out about harmful or unjust projects. I also oppose SB 63, which the supporters are the Bay Area Council and real estate-aligned transit advocates. The opponents are East Bay DSA and ACE, A-C-C-E. While transportation funding is critical, SB 63 opens the door for regressive taxation without guarantees for equity and distribution, sales tax disproportionately burdening low-income residents while failing to guarantee benefits for transit-dependent communities. This bill lacks the progressive revenue structure we need for inclusive infrastructure investments. And then, of course, SB 79, which I heavily oppose. The supporters are California YMB, Urban Habitat, which is the pro-developer wing of Urban Habitat, and the opponents are Public Land for Public Good coalitions. And so, SB 79 redefines agency use in ways that benefit developers, allowing public land to be funneled into private housing deals. We need surplus public land to remain public and be used for deeply affordable housing or community benefit not-for-profit. Transit-oriented development should not be a Trojan horse for displacement. And lastly, SB 692, which is, the supporter are the League of California Cities, but the opponents, and I usually side with the League of California Cities on things, but unfortunately, there is a culture amongst many cities that criminalizes homelessness. And so, the opponents are ACLU and the Western Center on Law and Poverty. I strongly oppose SB 692 because it expands the power to seize vehicles that homeless people use for shelter. This is a criminalization of poverty, plain and simple, and it undermines any sincere attempt to address homelessness humanely. We should be providing housing and services, not towing people's last refuge. And so, I believe it was the six. Of the other bills, there are eight, and for the- Of the other bills, there are eight, and for the, you know, considering the time, I won't go into why I support them, but I do support AB 11, AB 69, AB 124E, eight, I'm sorry, it's all four, eight, AB 1240, SB 295, SB 239, and I also support SB 417 and SB 456. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pryforce.
If I may, through the chair, I did make sure there was a tenants' bill for you, the Haney bill, so no worries.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments from members? Member Welch.
I just want to thank you for this list, Nicolau. It's so important for us, as we're in a housing crisis, that we're developing housing where the environment is already set up and the infrastructure is already set up, to support housing instead of having to force development to go out to undeveloped areas, forcing people to move out to new areas further away from schooling, from jobs, for where the center of their lives are, which we've seen so much over the past now 40 years, the cycle of displacement, starting off in San Francisco and then moving on to the East Bay, and now it's happening in the Central Valley and forcing people out of the state of California altogether. So being able to support development in places where housing is needed around, again, jobs, schooling, where the center of people's lives exist, is so important. It's a strain on our resources. It's a strain on our environment, having to build housing further and further out. People are spending more and more hours in their cars because these areas do not have transit developed to support them coming back to the Central East Bay, or to the peninsula, or to San Francisco. And so I'm very happy to see that the state of California is being a partner and understanding that housing needs to be where people's lives are. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Welch. Members, any other comments? I'll just close by saying, Nicolau, again, I'm very impressed the way you took our stated values and you mapped them onto legislation, along with thoughtful amendments, and you were thinking about really how we can move the needle. We're not doing virtue signaling. These are things that can really improve things in the city, in the county, and in the state. So thank you, and we're looking forward to your updates.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Action Item 12.2, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville Adopting the City Budget for Fiscal Years 2025 and 2026.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brian Moore, financial consultant with RGS. We have a presentation for you tonight, and if you'd like, we can go through that, or if you'd like, we could waive the presentation and take questions, whichever is the council's preference tonight.
I'm open to waiving the presentation. I've seen it many times now.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Madam Vice Mayor.
All in favor of waiving presentation? Presentation is waived. Members, are there any questions? Member Pryforce.
Were there any notable changes or anything that we should be aware of?
No. I think the only significant thing that we added to the report came to you from the Budget and Governance Committee. They wanted to have some additional detail on the appropriations limits, so we did add that at their recommendation. But otherwise, they are recommending tonight that you adopt the budget as presented, and so that's the only change we have.
Members, any discussion or a motion?
Is there a public comment over?
Apologies. We'll now take public comment. Members of the public, Fran, welcome.
I'm a member of the public and a member of the Budget Advisory Committee, and for the benefit of the public, Brian, I wonder if you would just like to give four or five recap highlights of the budget for the next year.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, I think, and again, the council is probably well aware of these, but just for the public, I think some of the things that are significant in the upcoming budget is that the, all five years of the budget in the projection, in addition to the two that you're adopting, are above the recommended standard for general fund, which is something new this time. Second, your budget includes the values that the council established at your strategic plan retreat, which is new. We also have added money from the residual property tax into your budget, and we have recommendations from both the BGC and the Budget Advisory Committee on the road forward. As I mentioned in the staff report, our vision after tonight is, in September, to have a presentation from Public Works about the capital improvement budget and the document, and you'll get to dive into more detail there. And then subsequent to that, we will talk back to you in the fall with a presentation on revenue options. And we have constructed the budget in such a way that in the first year, the budget will be supported by the fund balance. In the second year, it will be supported by the fund balance and $4 million from your reserves. But hopefully, what will happen is by that time, you will have an opportunity to talk about revenue opportunities, and if the community is supportive of those, you may not need to dip into other finances after that time. So those are some of the highlights, but again, I think you're in a good position. I congratulate the council for the amount of time you've spent on the budget, and then now the numbers of meetings we've had, both with you and your two budget committees. So I think you're in good position.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we'll now bring it back for discussion or a motion. Members?
I can move to adopt the proposed budget.
I will second.
You have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Department head reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad Smalley, Community Development Director, this is my report on Planning Commission actions taken at their May 22 meeting. Six of seven members of the commission were present. Vice Chair Haney was absent, and Commissioner Sam Gould was sworn in at the beginning of that meeting. The commission received the first annual report on the active transportation plan implementation. This report is scheduled for presentation to you as a council on June 17. The commission held a public hearing for a conditional use permit application for the Rivian Service Center, proposed in the three existing buildings located at 1483, 1487, and 1499 67th Street. The Planning Commission unanimously approved that application. And then lastly, the commission also held a public hearing for the second major amendment of the Marketplace Development Agreement. That amendment would postpone payment of certain housing fees to allow time for the developer to obtain permits for a potential residential project on Parcels A and B. The commission unanimously voted to recommend that the city council approve that amendment, and that item also is scheduled for review by the city council on June 17. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Members, are there any questions? Next, we have future agenda item requests from council members. Members, are there any future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
Since we have a whole lot that needs to get covered before our recess, and a lot of inquiries has come to my virtual desk, I'd like to submit a proposal that we establish and adopt a sidewalk program in Emeryville. This is what I am asking the council to consider. I propose the consideration of implementing an adopted sidewalk program in Emeryville, inspired by successful initiatives in neighboring cities such as San Francisco and Oakland. This program would encourage residents and local organizations to take an active role in maintaining and beautifying our city sidewalks. Key objectives: enhance the cleanliness and safety of Emeryville's pedestrian pathways, foster community engagement and civic responsibility, supplement municipal maintenance efforts optimizing resource allocation, and propose actions that would include developing a framework outlining volunteer responsibilities, support provided by the city, and safety protocols. Establish a pilot program in select neighborhoods to assess effectiveness and community response. Collaborate with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to integrate the program into existing pedestrian infrastructure plans. I believe this initiative aligns with Emeryville's commitment to sustainability and community involvement. I respectfully request that this proposal be added to the upcoming agenda for discussion and consideration, or to be passed over to the BPAC for consideration as well.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. Would you be amenable to working with staff on the appropriate place for this agenda or for this item?
Actually, it's being reviewed by the BPAC currently. So this would actually, from the city council, would just prioritize it, but it's currently being discussed by the BPAC.
So just as a matter of procedure, if an item is being discussed with BPAC, would it find its way back to council eventually? Could staff clarify that process?
I'm not sure where this is on the BPAC agenda. I can explore further and find out, but typically, once it does land on the BPAC agenda, eventually it would go back to city council as a report, unless city council requests otherwise.
If it's not formally on the BPAC agenda, would you be amenable to a council motion to send this item to BPAC for discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Members, we have a future agenda item to put Member Pryforce's sidewalk initiative on the BPAC agenda. With a show of hands, who's in favor? The motion carries. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am requesting that the city council agendize a discussion and potential direction to staff for the development of a temporary relocation assistance program, TRAP, to address the growing number of tenant displacement cases that fall between the cracks of current no-fault eviction regulations and our existing relocation assistance policies. As you heard from testimony today, too many renters in Emeryville are caught in a trap, not of their own making. These gaps persist, particularly in cases involving hazardous housing conditions, temporary construction displacement, or loss of essential services where eviction may not be formally pursued, but tenants are nonetheless forced out. These scenarios often leave renters, especially seniors' families and low-income households, vulnerable to housing instability without legal recourse or financial support. Without this program, tenants are literally falling into a trap, tenants relocated against protection. This proposed trap turns the narrative on its head, transforming a system that ensnares the vulnerable into one that catches them when they fall. A temporary relocation assistance program would serve as a bridge policy, covering cases where tenants experience forced displacement due to landlord negligence, code violations, or redevelopment activity, but are not eligible under traditional no-fault eviction protections. It would provide limited but crucial financial assistance to help renters secure interim housing without falling into homelessness or deeper economic precarity. Cities like El Cerrito, Albany, and Richmond, with similar size and demographic profiles, have adopted such policies, a temporary relocation assistance program, recognizing the moral and fiscal imperative of preventing displacement at the margins. And so the policy goals would be: close the protection gap for tenants experiencing involuntary displacement; promote health and safety by not forcing tenants to remain in uninhabitable units; prevent homelessness and reduce the burden on emergency services; advance our city's housing equity goals and tenant stabilization strategies. And so I request that this matter be referred to the Housing Committee, and of course, the city attorney for preliminary policy development, including eligibility criteria, funding mechanisms, and coordination with existing housing ordinances, and be returned to the full council for consideration by early fall 2025, being hopeful. But it could also be considered by the Housing Committee. So essentially, we have a gap, and people are falling through that gap in terms of our current housing ordinances, where support that they can receive from the county, and the temporary, I mean, the relocation assistance that we say that they're going to get, but landlords find ways of preventing them from having to pay these folks to be displaced because they are actually being evicted, and they find ways for them not to pay out. And we have it in our ordinances for them to pay out. The landlords have better lawyers, and they figure it out. And so this would be a temporary relocation assistance program that I am hoping we will consider for this council.
Members, is there support for sending this initiative to be discussed with the Housing Committee?
Wanting clarification?
Yes.
Is it going, Mr. Kennedy, would you be reviewing anything prior to it going to the Housing Committee?
Thank you, Councilmember Welch. Typically, I don't review any items that go before the Housing Committee. I can certainly assist once we get council direction to draft whatever legislation is proposed, but typically, I don't review items that go to the Housing Committee. We can certainly do some research and provide the Housing Committee with information regarding the program that El Cerrito and Albany enacted under this program, if council would like.
The council be agreeable to Mr. Kennedy providing more information to the Housing Committee before it goes before them, so they are discussing it within guidelines that we know are legally appropriate?
Yes, so I assume if it...
There is a question, I think.
Member Pryforce, go ahead.
So this is a kind of odd process, because what usually happens is that when we forward it to the committees, those committees, particularly Housing Committee, they go back and forth between the city attorney and doing their research. And so Valerie, to my knowledge, goes back and forth with the city attorney on issues before it's actually presented to the committee, and so it's usually vetted in that process. So I think this is like creating another bureaucratic process, which is kind of odd that we're doing that when we're trying to look out for people.
It sounds like what Member Welch was suggesting is that before this item reaches the Housing Committee, there would be some type of legal assessment.
That, and what I'm sharing is that that already happens in the process. And so Valerie, to my knowledge, Valerie does go back and forth with the city attorney. I mean, unless the city attorney has a...
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. Typically, we assist staff with questions they might have, but not all items that go before the Housing Committee are reviewed by the city attorney before they are presented before the Housing Committee. It's just not a standard practice that's followed.
Okay, so with a show of hands, is there support for sending this item to the Housing Committee with the understanding that staff support of the Housing Committee would review, and if there is need for Mr. Kennedy's assessment, they will communicate with him? Motion carries. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
So this one affects me personally. I'm requesting that the city council agendize a discussion, enact an item, or just let staff know that it's okay to approve reimbursement of travel and lodging expenses I personally incurred while representing Emeryville at League of California Cities events. Although the city typically requires submission of reimbursement requests within 30 days, I respectfully ask that the council make an exception in this case based on the following circumstances. Good faith public service. At the time these expenses were incurred, I was serving as Emeryville's appointed representative to the League of California Cities. I acted in good faith and on behalf of our city invested my own resources, sometimes without my knowledge that I would be paying for expenses beforehand, in the belief that the city would honor its commitment to its representatives. In truth, I did not anticipate needing to fight to recover expenses for work or training. I did in service to Emeryville. And the other point that I want to make is essentially, the city not reimbursing me would be considered a benefit, one of not my choosing. The labor representation and personal cost were real and conducted with integrity and acts that we not send a message that public servants who give of themselves in good faith may be left holding the bill for representing the city.
Just to ask for clarification here, Member Pryforce, have you already consulted... have you already consulted with the city clerk with the existing policies we have for reimbursement?
I'll allow the city clerk and the city manager to answer.
Yes, Councilmember Pryforce is talking about travel that he did to League of California Cities in, right after he was sworn into office, so January 2023. The council travel policy states that all travel reimbursement needs to be submitted with original detailed receipts within thirty days of travel. Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, there is a second conference that you attended, and I believe that that was also in 2023. I can't remember exactly when that one was, but that is what Councilmember Pryforce is talking about, the council would have to approve an item because the travel reimbursement policy clearly states that within thirty days, those reimbursements need to be submitted.
Thank you for the clarification. Members, with a show of hands, is there support for adding this travel reimbursement to the future agenda?
I have a point of clarification. So what was the reason for not submitting within thirty days?
At the time, I considered it as sort of a good faith public service that many times in my work, whether in philanthropy or in running a company, I would skip reimbursements as a contribution to the work that I was doing. That attitude has changed significantly, given the events of the last year and my removal from that position. And thus, that contribution is something that I no longer wish to make to the city, and that's why I'm asking for reimbursement. Yeah.
Members, I just want to note that we're not permitted to discuss this item in any detail. So just to watch out. So let's proceed with the show of hands. Is there support for adding this item to a future agenda? The motion fails. Any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
Yeah, if there's no other future agenda item for my colleagues, I would like to place on the future agenda item the, a discussion as to the return of the Pledge of Allegiance to our city council proceedings, which I will demonstrate. Thank you.
Members, with a show of hands, is there support for adding the Pledge of Allegiance to a future agenda item? Seeing none, the motion fails. The time is eight twenty-eight. This meeting is adjourned.